Twenty-eight that have applied. Many of those have already been scheduled for next year as well.
So that's twenty-eight that have applied, however, the tricky, the tricky-
Plus the nineteen that are already attending.
But the tricky part is that we've experienced people leaving.
We get melt.
Right.
The tricky part is we need thirty-three to break here.
Yes.
Because the current, the current hope is forty-eight, but we're probably getting paid a lot closer to forty-three.
So that's an important number. Other fees and revenues, let me break that down for you. We have, we are expanding our, hopefully our virtual high school program, online program. We think we can attain a little bit more fees there. The rebate check from SEER is in that, and also we, Honeywell is also giving us a rebate check to offset the expenditures in this budget. And it also includes the revenues that we receive for our business office and the superintendent's office doing the VZ superintendent's. We make a profit, I shouldn't say it's a profit, an overhead of twen- about twenty thousand dollars that we do the VZ school system as a revenue.
Twenty-two thousand four hundred and forty-one. What was that number for? Twenty-two thousand four forty-one.
That's exact.
But what is it?
It's for the revenue that we receive to oversee the business department and the guy, and the superintendent services.
Okay, so out of the eighty-six thousand they pay us, we get twenty-two thousand as a district?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Yep.
That goes into our treasury.
Profit center.
Yep. And we'll discuss at a future meeting whether you want to continue that next year. Tony?
That goes to the school district. That does not go to Mr. Lyons.
That's correct.
Because that's, that's a misconception in the community that-
Right.
Well, if we're gonna, if we're gonna, the twenty-two thousand goes in district, and the other eighty-six thousand is spread amongst expenses personnel.
That's correct.
Various people, various people receive reimbursement, people in my office, myself, even someone, that's all dispersed based on an agreement with VZ. But the net effect going into the RSU treasury is twenty-two thousand four hundred and forty-one dollars.
Now, does that offset the increase? Well, when we look at how much we pay per hour for the folks that work on the VZ contract, when you back out those hours worked, does that twenty-two thousand offset the loss from us for the hours worked?
I think it's one of the misunderstandings that you folks are actually taking the time out of our district's time.
Oh.
They, we need to go over this separately. You know, this, we spent enormous amount of time on this contract before we approved it, and we did a lot of scrutiny of not hurting the district. So for now, for budget purposes, this is a benefit to the district of twenty-two thousand.
Could I just insert on this issue?
Yeah.
There are a lot of new people around the table. This issue is coming up for consideration anyway. I'm proposing that we're gonna have an ad hoc committee that needs to talk about this, and that we as a board come together to review all of that material so we have the updated numbers and that we can make that decision going forward. But I think there's a lot of people around the table who need that backup information, a better understanding of some of the reasons behind it.
Right. It's a good time to go over it again.
So we're gonna be, we're gonna be moving on.
The next line item is very important also, and it can be very confusing to people. I'd like to introduce Craig Castello's in the audience, who is our auditor, and thank you for coming from Brenton, Tivito. And he's here to answer any questions that we may have in regards to that. But the next line is, is very critical. The amount of money that is provided for the fund balance off sex basically taxation. And therefore, we were pretty aggressive this year. We increased our fund balance by about a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars to four hundred thirty-nine thousand dollars. And so the next slide, and we'll go back and forth on the slides. Because this can be, this confuses some people that don't work with budgets, but people that do work with budgets understand this stuff. On June thirtieth fifteen, the finance committee met with our auditor, and we had a fund balance of one million, one sixty-two, four seventy-three. Out of that fund balance, and go back to the next page, you can see three hundred fourteen thousand was dedicated for fifteen sixteen, which is this year. So now we have a remaining fund balance of eight hundred forty-eight dollars, eight hundred forty-eight thousand, four thirty-five. During this year, we were approached by our four communities in regards to, we're looking at a project at the McGraw-weatherby elementary schools, possibly mainly for, to enhance programs there, and also to address traffic problems that we have there.
Emil?
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt. If you could just speak a little louder, I think some-
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay.
Thanks.
Yep. Therefore, the finance committee recommended to the full board, the board voted, to spend fifty thousand dollars out of this fund balance to have a schematic design provided to the school system to see how much it would cost to make improvements to our McGraw-weatherby complex. So fifty thousand dollars was taken out of that, and that was voted back in January of sixteen. Can you hear me okay? So the available fund balance for fiscal year seventeen and beyond, which is, which is next year, is seven hundred ninety, uh, seven hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars. So for fiscal sixteen, we have a fun, we have to match the fund balance for sixteen of three fourteen, so the taxpayers don't have to pay more if our fund balance was less. We increased it by a hundred twenty-five thousand, and now we are dedicating four hundred thirty-nine thousand dollars. And you can see that number in the blue box, four hundred nine, four hundred thirty-nine thousand dollars towards the budget to offset the assessments that are noted below. What's left over now for future budgets is three hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars for future budgets to be used.
So what that means is that we have to end this year with a hundred and, or at least eighty thousand dollars to the good in order to be able next year to match the same level we've contributed.
That is correct. So you'd have to, yes, let's say we zeroed out right at the end of the school year, we would be short eighty thousand dollars.
Well, this fund balance also includes the state funding that we could not touch, which was, in a sense, a one-time situation.
Yeah, that's another three, three fifty-nine.
That's correct. Yes. So the next section is, so what does that, because of the revenues and the expenditures, how does that affect the local assessment? The local assessment is the money attributed to how, which, what the four communities will contribute to our budget. The total amount and the local allocation is a recommended amount. It's determined by the valuation of our communities on a mill expectation by the state of Maine. The minimum that we could raise and propose seventeen is eight million, five hundred, three thousand two eleven. The non-state debt service is the HA project. That's the local of the HA project. Does not represent the state part of it, just the local part of it. And then local without state participation is an increase of four hundred sixty thousand dollars. So the total local share out of a thirty million dollar budget, ten million, seven thirty-eight comes from our four communities, and that's an increase of about three hundred one thousand dollars, or two point eight nine percent. So if you add up all the revenues, adds up to thirty million, eighty-one thousand, and it matches the thirty, the thirty million, eighty-one thousand, two thirty-five on the expenditure side. Okay? So the major factors in the increases and the decrease of this proposed budget. Some of the increases that we had, and then we had reductions to offset that, to come down to the total gross increase of about five hundred thirty-two thousand dollars. Salary benefit increases for existing staff and contracts is about two hundred seventy-one thousand dollars. You can see the special ed personnel, four hundred sixteen thousand dollars. Again, that's nine educational technicians. That's a point five teacher, point, additional OT, psych, and social work, adding up to four hundred sixteen thousand dollars to address the needs for our special ed youngsters next year. We added a classroom teacher in McGraw this year, and now we have to put that in the budget due to the high enrollments.
Emil, let me add one that we're watching very carefully right here that's not in the budget, and that is our kindergarten numbers at Smith School are high. So we're watching that very carefully so we could be in a situation where we potentially may have to add another teacher at Smith next year, which is not in the prescribed budget, but would commend the contingency theme, if you will.
Do you want to actually say what the risk ratio is, the student-teacher risk?
Right now, we're, I talked to Don on Monday, we have sixty-three registrants for three teachers, so you're twenty-one to one.
Yeah, for kindergarten, that's not acceptable.
So that's, so you can see what the landscape looks like. So you can see the landscape there, so that's good news, and we're watching it very carefully.
Co-career, co-curricular stipends that were added during sixteen that were, let me give you the list. It's the Weatherby Singers. Do the higher numbers, assistant cross-country coaches at Wagner and Reed's Brook, and band director at Wagner and Reed's Brook. HA Robotics Team was added. The HA Unified Basketball Team, as you know, was added. And that we have Supervision Evaluation Co-Chairs Committee that we added, that are working on the SMURIC, a committee that you alluded to for evaluation of teachers. You can see that we added the middle school B-teams that was mentioned before, that's about seventeen thousand dollars. We added a point-two guidance counselor in McGraw School, which is an additional day.
Right, that makes that full-time.
That makes it a full-time position. Now, anticipated needs of personnel and student needs. We have already received from our special ed director that we may need another out-of-district tuition enrollment because of one of the students that we anticipate to move in will need a significant need, will need significant needs. That's about forty thousand dollars out of the ninety. The other is a five oh four student that may need special, at Smith School, that may need special transportation, we're not sure yet, that has a physical handicap. And the other one, we anticipated, there's, there was a leave of absence on a physical education teacher at Hampden Academy. The teacher said she was coming back, however, she's applying for job for SAD one. So we did budget the existing individual in, in the, in the physical education department. However, if the leave of absent teacher comes back, it's an additional twenty-five thousand dollars. So you can see that the ninety thousand dollars is basically taken for. And then the net non-payroll variance in building department budgets was a hundred ninety thousand dollar increase. And we'll show you that that has been lowered significantly. So what were the reductions? We had, at that time, we had a one million, seventy-six thousand dollar increase to the budget. We noted that that was not going to pass the straight face test, so we have expenditure reductions. We did have eight retired, potential retirees and replacements that we replaced that, in those individuals with a BA eight and two-person insurance. BA means Bachelor of Arts on the eight, on the scale of eight. It could be higher, it could be lower. Big and co-curricular positions we eliminated due to non-participation in those activities. Let's see, that would include low participation in the civil rights team at Reed's Brook, intramural director at Reed's Brook, intramurals at Wagner, after-school activities stipend at the academy, dance club advisor at the academy, and the computer club advisor at the academy was eliminated. Mentioned earlier, we restructured the tech department. We went from a full-time equivalent four to three individuals. We eliminated the marketing position that we had hired. We lowered our fuel lines by fifty thousand dollars. We eliminated an admin support ed tech for administrators for evaluations. We eliminated that position. We eliminated a study hall monitor at the high school. And then we're providing, the Tibbetts Foundation, which is an endowment of thirty thousand dollars, will be paying about thirty thousand dollars of textbooks and supplies in, in the, in the budget, instead of coming through taxation. It's a source of revenue. We have salary adjustments that we have in the budget that we reduced. And that contracted services reduction, those are items like, we eliminated some money in copiers. We'd like to eliminate a little bit more money in copiers. Maintenance contract reductions, and the Newburgh custodial services we reduced. That includes that. And then we had some curriculum reductions of about eighteen thousand, three ninety-two. So you can see we had additions of about a million, seventy-six thousand. We reduced that by five hundred forty-three thousand. You can see where the five hundred thirty-two thousand dollar gross increase comes from.
Do you want to say where those salary adjustments, the hundred and forty-three thousand reduction in salary adjustments?
Yep. The admin team is received, went from three percent, they're receiving a two percent raise. We had a special project stipend that we no longer need for about six thousand for one of our administrators. We are gonna pay for new teacher orientation through a federal grant instead of through the budget. We removed some summer secretarial hours that were additional summer hours, not existing summer hours, for some of our secretaries in the summertime. And we were going to increase the substitute teacher from seventy-five dollars to eighty dollars, or is it seventy to seventy-five, seventy to seventy-five? And we did not do that, and that would, if we would have increased it, that would have been an increase of about sixteen thousand dollars. So that's-
Emil, the restructuring of the tech department is, is a four to three FTE. So is anybody actually being laid off, or are people moving to halftime, or how, how is that one person FTE?
No. We had a resignation.
Mr. Woodside leaving.
And so there's a position that won't be filled?
Right.
That's correct.
Thank you.
So, moving along, the cost-sharing formula which determines the, our four communities of what their percentage of the local assessment only will do is determined by valuation and pupil count. And you can see, and I will repeat, it's a three-year evalu-, it's three-year valuation from the Department of Education. That's where the number comes from. It's not, it's not a local number. It's a three-year average valuation from the State Department in our pupil count. And you can see what the valuations were. You can see, let's say Hampden's valuation went up point four five percent. Newburgh went up significantly, not significantly, one point five, but that will affect them in the assessments. Winnport went up to a point two-two, and Frankfurt went down one point one-six. And you can see the enrollments. What that does is determine the cost-sharing formula. It takes a percentage of valuation, percentage of pupils, eighty percent of the valuation, a percentage, plus the twenty percent of the pupil percentage, adds up to fifty-eight point one-four percent that Hampden's share would be on the local assessment side. Newburgh would be nine point nine-seven, Winnport is twenty-four point four-eight, and Frankfurt is seven point four-one. And if you look at the local costs, as I indicated, that the required, the required mileage from the state is, we call it the local EPS commitment, is eight million, five oh three. The debt, local debt, which is the high school, and then the other local share is determined, those two columns are determined on the cost-sharing formula. So if you took the five hundred thousand dollars and multiplied it by fifty point five, eight point four, you would come out with Hampden's shares two hundred ninety thousand, nine ten. Then the change in the town assessments in table six, where Hampden will increase by two point nine percent, about a hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars. Newburgh will increase by forty-one thousand, eight ninety-one, four point one. Winnport, sixty-eight thousand, one forty-seven, two point seven, and twelve thousand, eight sixty-five for Frankfurt, which is a one point six percent increase, which if you add those up is three hundred one thousand, one eighty-nine. The next page is your adult ed program. Basically, that's flat. You can see the cost share there. And then the box underneath it is the, is the total allocation with adult ed, of which the four communities will be paying towards the thirty million dollar budget. The next, our, is information. We've had some gross budget variances from oh nine to seventeen. You can see since fourteen, two thousand fourteen, we'd had two point two, two point three, one point nine. This will be a one point eight percent gross increase. The reason for two thousand twelve and thirteen, as indicated, those were the first payments towards the high school. The interest payments was two thousand twelve, and the principal interest payment was in two thousand thirteen. That's what affected the gross, the gross. Then the local assessments of our four communities, you, you can see that this year's two point eight. Last year was one point two on the local assessment. The twelve point seven in the year fourteen, that's when Frankfurt was incorporated, so there were additional expenditures, which kind of skewed, which kind of skewed that local increase. If you took that amount of money, four point one percent would have been the local increase. And then we have assessments per year for the last nine years. Last nine years Hampden's assessment has gone up at an average of two point five eight percent. Newburgh's nine-year assessment's gone up three point four nine percent on the local side. Winnport's two point eight for the last nine years on the local side, and Frankfurt for the last three years has gone up three percent. And then, interesting page, as the data analysis above EPS, above, essential program and services is not supposed to fund a full K-12 comprehensive program. It's an interesting, interesting chart because our test scores compared to Cape Elizabeth, Galmouth, and at the high school, Yarmouth, and you can see that their above EPS expenditures are significantly above RSU twenty-two. And you can compare it to other school systems also. But we're four percent above EPS, which is on a K-to-12 comprehensive program. That's basically where you want to be, between three to four, five percent. So, in summary, this budget is a local increase of two point eight, gross increase of about one point eight. The finer points of this budget is that no one, there's no program eliminations, no educational program eliminations in this budget. Number two, there's no one losing their jobs. Number three, we lost a hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars, but we added four hundred sixteen thousand dollars to special ed. Number four, we do acknowledge that our teachers need salary increases. This amount of money includes the proposals that we had on the table on either side. So that, all the money for salaries and benefits is in this budget on the proposals that we had, have already made. So therefore, again, I think this is a a good budget. I think this is a good budget with the loss of state money, the increase of five hundred thousand dollars on special ed needs, which is desperately needed, and that we have also acknowledged our teacher salary increases in this budget.
So at this point, there were just a couple of things. I don't want to patronize you because I know that you have heard so much and know so much about this, but I want to make sure that, that if there's anything that we should dig into, I want to make sure, does everyone, everyone understands the EPS? We all know the state decides what's in all of those sections and how much we're supposed to have for student and all that. So when he talks about the above EPS, that's what this district decides to spend over and above. The other thing I'd like to point out is that we are consistently, our budget is so tight, we are consistently ending the year with less, about one percent that is not expended. This is so tight. And we're talking about on a thirty million, twenty-nine, thirty million dollar budget, you saw the number, we came up with three hundred and some odd thousand. So there's no contingency, there's no secret bank accounts, there's, we don't even win Powerball. There's just nowhere, I mean, this, that is what we have.
There are contingency lines and expenditures.
Which I think we're gonna let Rob do his-
Yeah, is this the appropriate time?
That would be awesome.
So after the last budget committee meeting, there were several non-budget committee board members present who asked really about how the contingencies were applied on the line items, and how that compared to prior year's spending, or at least the historical points that were used to determine-
You can speak up a little bit, one.
Yeah, sorry. So at the last budget committee meeting, several school board members who were non-budget committee members who had not had the opportunity to look through the, the level of detail that was afforded to all the budget committee, at least in our own research with the information that was provided and discussed, offered up some questions about the approach by which the contingencies were applied. Following that meeting, I started to sort of ghost the, the current proposal in a spreadsheet format, and attempted to strip out all the contingency, looking at the historical points from either last year's spending or the prior year's spending, or looking at an average, or even in fact looking, in the case of energy, at what is most likely to be a typical year, knowing that last year was a warm year, fuel prices were low, and that that's probably not always going to carry forward. I went through each item. I then actually had the opportunity after, we were tied up in subcommittee meetings all week this week, met this morning for about three hours with Ann and Emil, and filled in the blanks for the year-to-date remaining for two thousand sixteen so I could actually get a valid reference point for this year's expenditures. I then looked at, with Ann and Emil, stripping out the contingencies from those individual line items, which has been a practice of the budget committee for-
About ten years at the request of the town manager who didn't want the contingency as a special line. We were asked, I think it was about ten years ago, wasn't it?
Yes.
To, to put the ten, contingency in the lines where we wanted to put it. Instead of what we had done previously to that is have a line that was contingency.
Correct. So in the way I typically handle budgeting in, in my business, and in typically what I've seen with other, or I wouldn't say typically, but commonly in other, whether it's a nonprofit or a civic organization, you look at spent, you look at proposed, you look at variance, and then you use that to inform the following year. Probably not unlike what I have come to learn is the process and the expectation. I was able to observe the Hampden Town Council meeting video this afternoon that was recorded on Monday, I believe, or on May second. And it's, I think the approach I was taking that I completed this morning is probably more consistent with how municipalities do it. And what I found, and I will, I've shared this with the budget committee initially, just to make sure there aren't any gross errors in assumption, but I was able to, with the exception of the energy side, which again, I think to take the electricity costs, the fuel costs, and the gasoline costs of last year, when you consider that our heating degree days are at least one thousand less than prior years, that our fuel has ranged from a dollar eighty a gallon down from four thirty a gallon, and that electric rates, which were actually escalating, actually stabilized, but are still higher than others. If you look at those factors, and with energy being really the sole one that looks at a historical point, not last year's expenditure, because we don't know what Mother Nature will bring next year, nor the oil companies, nor the electric companies. I actually found that with the addition of a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar contingency, we were within thirty-eight thousand dollars of this year's budget. In fact, where we, where I've always felt we should be at a one percent level, would put that closer to three hundred thousand, would actually suggest that we increase this year's proposed budget. So what I, rather than, again, this is with a, really a first pass. I think this is a manner in probably which most board members in their business do their accounting when they look at expenditures, when they allocate for next year. And what I found is that some items went up, some, some items went down, as you normally would do, based on things like website one year, maintenance the next. I then actually went through and highlighted in blue the things that directly affect student education, support services, special ed, any contracted work, things that are directly experienced by the students. Highlighted that in blue. The yellow represents energy, and I'll share this with folks. And I guess I would, as a member of the budget committee, with respect to Cindy as our chair, ask that if there are board members who desire to, to see a more line-by-line approach, because I know that's been expressed, and, and this would be with the invitation, invitation of the council as well, and any other interested public, to look at it from this perspective. What it does, it changes the way we do budgeting. What it does, it changes the way we do budgeting. It identifies a contingency, which as you know is either right or wrong, but what it does, it pulls it out of each line item. It respects the fact that spending, in fact, and let me just be clear, the amount, this is the roughly $10 million non-payroll expenditures. I did not, because the payroll expenditures are really attached to people, positions that are really known for the, those, we know where those are headed. These are the things that from a business or municipality perspective for non-payroll are the ones that I think most finance committees and others spend quite a bit of time on. There was actually only a $38,000 delta from what's currently proposed and what this method would kick out. And I guess I would suggest that unless we can find other areas where there are adjustments, that a $250,000 contingency seems at 0.8% a little low to operate if we're also expected to carry over savings that replenish the unallocated fund balance, which then seems to, again, I also asked Emil for a copy of the 10-year average. There are years when that, many years ago, that it went negative, but in most years, and actually in accountant speak, they're actually listed as negative, negative is good. It's actually not an engineering way of doing it, but that's why I'm not an accountant. But basically, it varied, Emil can, the variation from high to low, or is there an anecdotal average? I think we've been in the $300,000 range.
Yep.
On average, it's been as high as a million one this last year and it's been as low as 16,000 many years ago.
Fiscal year nine was 89,000. Fiscal year 10 was 212,000. Fiscal year 11 was 315,000. Fiscal year 12 was 303. Fiscal year 13 was 192,000.
That's when I was.
And fiscal year 14 was 669. Last year was the 1.1 million, which we showed up on the presentation.
So in my mind, you know, some of the contingencies built in to another warm year with low fuel prices, but if they, and I did not look at the highest year. I looked at, again, this is something that I think is subject to a little, well, one thing, I will say this, we, these are for the most part locked-in rates. We have a locked-in fuel rate. What we don't know is how much we'll use because of the temperature. The electricity, which for the academy powers the geothermal system, is also tied to Mother Nature, but those rates are also locked in. You work with a clock, so again, the rates are locked in. We don't have to worry about fluctuation of the rate, but the amount used again is dependent on Mother Nature. Next year, as we develop next year's budget, if those rates have increased, we're going to have to look at modifying that energy line where in the past, there was always a contingency built in, it was always in my mind, never hit. So for, from one perspective, the budget was never exceeded, which is a good thing, but from another person's perspective, it was over, there was too much contingency applied or was added. So by stripping it out, by putting it down at the bottom and looking at just as a contingency, which I think most people going through the budget process look at that as really your buffer or your battery, and they know what, what the benchmark should be. I think we're a little low on that. Again, I would offer that we, if we could have a special meeting, because we do have the obligation, Cindy, can you clarify the date we have to approve the budget by to get on the warrant?
Well, what?
I'd say the 18th.
May 11.
May 11.
Because we have to sign warrants.
So we get to sign the warrants on the 18th.
They have to be countersigned by the municipalities, and so that takes time for them.
Our district budget meeting is Thursday, June 9. So we're backwards planning here.
So what would you see, well, first of all, before we get into the meeting, I want to, I want to give everybody a chance to have, Rob did, he did his indoctrination as a six-month.
Yeah, apparently every member of the budget committee has done this deep dive to figure out how things work. And the other members were not showing the same angst that I was because they looked at it before and they knew the patterns of how those individual line items work. I just, again, I kind of blew it up and looked at it from a different angle, came to a statistically the same conclusion, but it may be one that others are able to follow along from, from the way they, they normally look at budgets.
But what I appreciated is you, since we committed to looking at going back to a contingency approach that we actually preferred prior to being asked to do it differently, you've given us sort of a first pass and a lens to look at that, to say, you know, how have we been doing on those contingencies? So thank you for taking that time to organize it that way. Does, did it, does anybody have any questions of Rob? He's, he's done it tremendously, it's all fresh in his mind today.
It's really fresh. Like not much sleep in the past three days or four days.
You dug into it.
I would, I'm just going to interject quickly looking at the time. I stated earlier, we're going to have time for public comment. I want to make sure we do that. So because we are going to go to another meeting for the board to discuss that, I may, I mean, unless you've got a burning question that you want answered now.
That's what I want.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought that's what we just said about May 11.
Well, I think.
We need to set a date as a budget committee or?
Well, what I wanted to, I mean, I wanted to know, we, when I, we started this out is do we need another meeting? Do you need to know more? Has Rob shared enough? And there's no reason to finish this tonight. And if we're not, if you want to wait and do a special meeting on the 11th, let's do it.
I think that it would be a good idea, given the, what the, we learned the municipality concerns were. I have to say that I appreciate the, the representatives coming to the budget committee, and I wasn't able to come to the first, but I came to the last. And I, it's unfortunate that the questions and the concerns weren't vocalized at the last budget committee, because I think all we had to, all we needed was to be asked. And there was questions about contingency, but it wasn't asked by, or requested or a preference even stated to us regarding how you'd like to see a contingency. And I think we're all open to making those adjustments with the feedback. And so I think we should have a special meeting and, and reevaluate and welcome those representatives to the table. I think that we run the risk of it being in the spotlight. I think we need a contingency in order to protect our district so we're not in a position next year where we are in dire straits and eliminating positions, and that's a growing concern for me, given our increase in special ed and in our increased enrollment. So I think, I hope that we can move forward with the town support and the teacher's support and move in, in a collaborative spirit as we move this forward, because it's really important for me as a parent to ensure that all of our students have everything that they need and that we are transparent. And it's not our intention not to be.
Karen, if I could just build off of that, we, we had a meeting in office headquarters. We can have to go, we can have to go with the town managers in attendance, at which time Emil and Ann did offer to, all of them to come in, to go line by line through the budget if that was their interest. I know Cindy from Newberg did take that opportunity. I think it's really important that, you know, we recognize that. I think it is definitely our intention that we become more transparent, that we are trying to work this process. We heard in that meeting, we've heard in budget meetings, we've heard it tonight, the importance of moving towards the contingency approach. That's something that we're going to be doing going forward next year.
Absolutely. I think it's a better way of doing it anyway, the way we used to do it.
So I just wanted to build off your comment because I think that is really important. I think it's important that board members, I don't know if I jump-started, I'm still not sure if we approved May 11, but if we do.
No, I think we can. I think, I mean, at least Karen's, I, I think, I don't see any reason to rush. So if it will help us and I think maybe even have Rob spend a little bit of time on his handiwork.
Yeah, I have permission to slow it down a little because again, first year catching up to where all the individuals are. I want to thank Ann directly and Emil for spending well over three hours literally going through line by line, the, the sub, sub-accounting items where you're actually dialing into names and faces. I was content at seeing the rollups on those because the way I looked at it previously and the reason I endorsed it on April 28th is the explanations for why there was a change from one year to the next were valid, but I wanted to get under the hood and look at, well, what really made 16 valid, or what made 15 valid that made 16 valid and do a little history check. So thank you, Ann.
So to clarify, we're talking about a special meeting of the full board, not the budget committee. Just want to make that clear.
Could we, just a question, maybe we can't do it this year, and you don't have to answer the question now, but we've talked a lot about numbers and we have our opinions about the numbers that you see. The one thing I haven't heard about is the impact on our students. And so right now, we have students in our elementary schools that some are ready for next year now, some are ready for this year now. So at any time, could we kind of look at, and I've asked this before, but we are at a shortfall in some of our grade levels. And when I, when I look at some of the items as far as, you know, what was spent on textbooks and what wasn't spent on textbooks, I wonder what would have been the impact if we actually spent the other 30 grand on materials? So is there any way we could actually, and I don't know if we can do it this year in seven days, but, and I don't want anybody working overnight like Rob's, but like really look at like, how does this impact our students? Because we're going to have students next year going into the next grade that are ready for this grade. And what I hear a lot from the schools is we don't have the resources. We don't have what we need and also kind of looking at, like I wonder too, if we can talk about some things, like you talk about the clock, the electrical, one of the things I've always wondered, we're for community-based, what would happen if we all bought our oil together? Right? You take six buildings to, you know, 16 buildings or like color copies, how much do we spend on this? You know, it's just kind of looking at some of that stuff and would be good, because we don't all have time like Rob, but I appreciate what you did, but some of us can't free in three hours to.
And can I just add to one thing Jason said too? One of the things we started to do, and it really at that point, just trying to make sure we were accurate on the, the drill down on the expenditures, was to look at how are we moving our strategic plan forward on any of these line items that are directly related to the first two pages, where we talk about doing these things in the community, outreach or other things, which line item should those live in and are we changing those? And we started to go there. There are changes, I was happy to see, but there wasn't enough time to, that needs, I think, the finance committee input in the, the education, others, just as a board as a whole to say, we think this, adding money to this bucket advances that strategic initiative. Or taking money out stops it from going backwards. I mean, that's, that's the kind of thought process we usually see, so.
Well, ROI.
ROI.
Right. Well, and I think, you know, we, we have some of those in here and we can pull those out for the next meeting just to align those with the actual strategic areas. And some of it is just keeping our heads up water. I mean, we're just trying not to go backwards if we can.
Just, so we're going to find, we're going to set a date, we meet on May 11 of what to continue this discussion, and I would urge people to take advantage of the opportunity that's been discussed. I do, on that last topic, I want to, I want to make a comment that, you know, all year long, we have various committees that do the job of looking at the various needs and trying to assess what is needed within the districts. And that's, that's up and down depending on a whole variety of topics and that changes all the time. And that has corresponding impacts on finances. So when we talk about what we as a board do in terms of oversight of the district, it's not just the budget committee, it's not just the finance committee, it's the education committee when it comes to curriculum.
Absolutely.
And I think that's a really important thing for the board to remember is that that is something that is an ongoing process that doesn't necessarily show up at budget time, but it does dictate some of the decisions that are made. You know, I also just, the finance committee, for instance, supervises all of the district accounting and signs every warrant that comes through. Our last several audits performed by Brentner Thibodeau have been virtually flawless. So I, I'm saying this because I was very concerned and I won't lie, fairly ticked off at some of the comments that were directed to me, to the administration team, the staff, and all of us around the table. And I think it is absolutely fine, and I encourage the comments and questions and demand for greater transparency, as you heard us say several times at a previous meeting tonight, we are going in that direction and we will make that change next year. But I'm going to demand that the line gets drawn when we start issuing personal attacks. We can do this in a collaborative collegial way. There's a lot more that goes on that has not been stated in a clear way, and to mischaracterize that is a great disservice. So I'd like to move on to public comment. We promised you that. I'm sorry it's getting so late. I know there's been a lot to say. This was not my intent that it's this late in the game that we're getting to it. I thank you for sticking in there. If you would like to step up, please do so. Does the podium state your name and?
My name's Joe Pickering. I've been a resident of Hamden for about 15 years. I'm glad to hear that the board is looking at moving away from its contingents, its hidden contingency, I should say, type of budgeting. I didn't become aware of that until this week, and I would just have to say that I think that some examples of what could be done to even improve transparency would be putting more information on the website. That's a tremendous resource. I'm looking right now at the budget report that Mr. Jennings provided to me that the school administration provided to him earlier this month, then certainly there could be no reason why that couldn't be put on the website, so that's something that we can review. Rob, I would just note that, you know, I do agree, I think that the fuel certainly looks completely off. And obviously, this past winter's been very warm, but if you look at fiscal year 15 for what was budgeted for fuel, heating fuel, it's 335, what was actually used was 317. And at least according to this report, what's, what was, is being requested for fiscal year 17 is 397. That's $80,000 for, I would say, a contingency, because 15 was extraordinarily cold. That was one of the colds.
It would be $80,000, you're correct, Karen.
So I would just say that when you look at, when you see something on a budget that says instructional supplies, 130,000, but it's not really 130,000, it's whatever, it's 100,000, it just, it just makes you feel good as a taxpayer or as a person who's working with teachers that, to know that they're, we're being told on paper that, you know, this is available for instructional supplies, but it's not really, you know. So I'm glad that the board is going to be moving towards greater transparency, and I think it would also make it a lot easier if they want to be looking at zero-based budgeting to be looking at that kind of contingency. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. I'm Angus Jennings, I'm the town manager. And I'm here tonight not to speak directly to contingencies. I'm here tonight to speak from a place of concern. My concern is regarding the health of the town of Hamden. I've appeared before this board a couple of occasions earlier this year to talk about the town's fund balance trend, so I just want to remind people of those numbers. Year-end FY15, the fund balance had dropped to 7.2%. This was after it was into the twenties back in FY09, so that's a very significant drop. That was about $1,050,000, and that'll go down by about 200,000 because 200,000 of the fund balance was included in the revenue for this FY16 budget, so we've got to make that transfer. So close to $1 million may sound like a lot of money to some people. The town of Hamden writes checks of about $1.2 million a month. So if you think of your household, you think of your business, the idea of having capital on hand that is about a month's worth of expenses is just about the minimum that I think you might like to have. Let's say your household budget's five grand a month. If you don't have five grand in your bank account, that's a tough way to live. And the fund balance is also needed to support cash flow. I know Cindy Grant, the Newberg manager, has talked about this in the past. Basically, our primary source of revenue is property tax, we get paid twice a year. And the money doesn't all just roll in. We sometimes have to do collections, we have to place liens, we have to go pursue foreclosure. Not everybody just pays the check right on time. I would point out that the RSU can count on getting its money on the same day every month. So I actually included a cash flow analysis in my proposed budget to the town council on Tuesday night, Monday night, that showed the month-end balances in the town's bank accounts. And what this showed is that the balances got very low in August and September before the October due date, and they got very low again in January, February, leading up to the tax due date in April. Fortunately, thanks to the foresight of my predecessor and the support of the town council, we did authorize the tax anticipation though this year for the first time in the town's history. We've had to borrow money to stay current on our bills. When I modified that cash flow analysis to take out that 650,000 that we borrowed in the month of February, we were negative 304,000 in February. So without borrowing, the town of Hamden was insolvent in the town, in, in the month of February, almost two months ago. So when I say I'm here speaking out of concern for the financial, financial health of this community, that's why I'm here. And I believe in doing so, I'm representing the concerns not only of my council, but of the people in the community. So circling back, we survived, and after June 30th, we'll still have 850,000. And after June 30th, we'll still have 850,000, right? So that sounds, that sounds okay. Wrong. The FY15 year-end inter-fund receivables, and for those who didn't follow the sewer debacle, the town has been loaning money to the sewer for many years. And that's what's kept the sewer solvent. The sewer funds year-end accounts payable to the general fund at the end of FY15 was 546,000. By the end of this year, it will be close to 700,000. That does not count the 300,000 that is overdue to the city of Bagore. So the sewer fund is a million behind. Thankfully, because of the actions of the town council to adjust the rates, FY17 will be the first year in more than a decade that the sewer will actually pay its costs operating and debt service on an ongoing basis through the year. It will not get us caught up. That rate increase provides for approximately 100,000 to be paid back to the town's general fund. So with a year-end deficit sewer to general, call it a million dollars, 100,000 is not enough. We will have to raise sewer rates again in the fall. And that's part of my budget proposal to, to the council. But here's what's interesting. That at the end of FY15, there's $897,000 credited to the Hamden general fund as inter-fund receivables. So that's 897,000 that is due from other government accounts. Part of that's the sewer, part of that is the reserve funds, which have also been drawn down over the years. That 897,000 shows up on our balance sheet as an asset. It's only an asset when you lend money to someone if they're going to pay you back. So that 850,000 is not in fact 850,000. It's negative 47,000. That is the situation we're in. And if you're not concerned yet, I'll keep talking. So that's only money on paper. It's not in the bank. We can't spend it. It's why, without the tax anticipation note, we would, we would have dropped into the red in February. And the year-end inter-fund balance payable, because the general fund, and this has gone both ways. In addition to what the general fund is owed, the general fund also owes money, 348,000. This is a long-term problem that I will be working on for years to undo the situation that we're in. So as the town manager, I watch and the town council watches every dollar. We understand that every dollar that we spend is a dollar that came out of the pocket of somebody in this community. And I feel very confident, based on the people I've met in the eight or nine months that I've worked here, that the people whose dollars we're taking worked hard for those dollars. So we have a serious obligation to take seriously how we spend that money. So you know the broader trends from FY09 to FY16. Well, the budget on this side of the street went up 22%. The county tax went up 31%. The town taxpayer-supported budget fell by 2.2% over seven fiscal years. I do not need to tell those of you who are deeply involved with the budget process how challenging that has been for the town. So with that, obviously, we reviewed the backup accounting. We found a lot of things that didn't stand up, didn't make sense. We've heard about contingencies. I very much appreciate the comments of several of the board members, many of you, perhaps all. And I had heard some of those comments from individual board members prior to tonight. And I'm very glad to hear that that appears to be the majority position because there has got to be a change in how we budget. Because while we do not have budget oversight, obviously, at the RSU, we pay the bill. We owe our taxpayers an explanation when they come to us and say, where are our tax dollars going? So I would like to get to a point, and I'm more hopeful after tonight's meeting, that we will get to a point where we will be able to answer that question without explaining why we're increasing proposed line items by tens of thousands of dollars when historical spending is tens of thousands less than what's been budgeted. Thank you.
I do want to make a comment here. There will be times when they will increase. For example, we put off and put off in buying textbooks. And there will be a big 50 or 60,000 jump when curriculum changes or we have to do something. Last year, we spent a great deal of time deliberating the Chromebooks for the high schools. So there's a big change, one you noted in your recording, I think it was. It was either textbooks or the lease purchase. And it was a very intentional decision this board spent a lot of time on and the tech coordinator spent a lot of time on to move to Chromebooks. So it was like a 60,000 difference. That was an intentional decision on our part because Chromebooks are a much more cost-effective way for this district to go. And so to be clear, I'm not, we're, even with what we do, you will see those big changes because we have curricular program decisions. We have to make, keep the district viable, get the return on investment in what we're doing and in times defer decisions that we don't want to defer for curriculum reasons. There will be a reason behind every one of those lines. So please come look at what we've done. There's a lot of time that goes into those decisions.
I, I hear what you're saying and I understand certainly that there are costs that happen in a single year that don't happen a year before or a year after. I understand that. There are budgeted line items for costs that are quite predictable, that are showing tens of thousands more budgeted that are needed.
Right. And I think we've explained that. And we have committed to doing the contingency carefully.
You've explained it as contingency.
Right.
The idea, and I think this is what's been embraced, is to show that contingency in the cost center for which the contingency is being planned.
Completely and 100% agree.
We talked about that a couple weeks ago.
I, I wrote the letter that I wrote and I said what I said because I felt it was needed to get this board's attention. And it seems to have worked. And I'm very glad of that because I think these changes need to happen. And what I'm told from those who have been in the community much longer than I have is that they're long overdue.
Okay, Angus, thank you very much for your comments. A point of order, a point of order. Yeah, Mr. Shakespeare, I think you wanted to ask a question and I don't mean to interrupt, but a point of order.
I couldn't hear you.
By 9:30, we need to go into executive session or extend the time for executive session. So if there are other people who want to stand up and ask questions, please do so now. But please know that that's a reality we have to deal with.
Bill Shakespeare, Western Avenue in Hamden. Thank you, Angus. I'll make this quick. I'm not a town councillor now. I have been for six years previously. I'm quite familiar with what's going on. When I was on the council, every year we have a budget for the town. And every year, we have to look at the school, what they're going to send us for demands and make it real basic. Every year, let's say this is my arm. In order to accommodate the extra charges from the school, we had to cut off the meat off the arm. Then we have to cut off everything. We're basically, like Angus said, the town is right down to the bone and we're chipping away at the bone. I don't understand. I know what Rob said about contingencies. I don't agree with him 100%. If this information is accurate, which Angus passed out, 441,000 of extra contingencies. Number one, I'd like to know where that money goes. How do you use that? That's being passed on, not just to the town, to the citizens of Hamden, Winterport, Newburgh and Frankfurt. Forty, 441,000. Water and sewer budgeted in 2015, 85,000. The actual expenditure was 47,000. That's quite a difference. So the next year, because we didn't spend as much, we kept the budget at 85,000. This year so far is 32,000. So this water and sewer.